Okay, we're going to call the regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for June 11th, 2013 order. Will anybody stand and join us in saying please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before I present the agenda, I just want to inform the audience that our meetings now are both audio-recorded and video-recorded. If you're going to address the board tonight under Concerns of Citizens, Republic Speaks, as it's listed on the agenda, we ask that you sign the sign-in sheet in the back before you leave, so we have an accurate record of your name, and to also come forward to the podium and speak into the microphone. That said, the agenda is before us. Is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff? Just under Concerns of Trustees, Stark County Township Association. Any other changes? Okay, hearing none, the agenda or stand as presented with the one addition. For the record, Mrs. Campbell is off this evening. Won't be attending the meeting, and she doesn't have anything of administrative report, so if there's anything, I'll contrast it at the time. We'll go on to unfinished business, and that is the CDBG approval.
We've got sheriff's report.
Or the sheriff's report, I apologize, we passed over top of that. Does anybody in the audience have anything for the sheriff's office to speak? Okay, Mr. Hawes with one item.
Just for, just to let the record reflect, Saturday I was over in the Avondale area. A gentleman by the name of Melvin Beal, B.I.E.Y.L., at 2849 Sharonwood Avenue Northwest. He made a note to me, his neighbor directly across the street at 2846 Sharonwood is noting concerns about one to two cars always being parked out on the road when there's some driveway space, plus it is directly behind his driveway. He's noting, I simply told him that I would follow up on it. He gave some indication to me that he had some type of involvement, and that can't see PD and not make a decision through the sheriff's office could be done, and I just told him I'd noted it. Because I do know there's no parking. The vehicle I saw there, I was in the neighborhood, had current plates. It didn't appear to be an honorable self. Just something.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, that'll close the sheriff's report. We'll go to unfinished business, and that is the CDBG approval.
Sure. Yeah, we're just looking to amend that resolution. It was a resolution that passed a time or two ago with regard to the Warner Church Road project. And I think the fund was changed, or some kind of change came down that necessitated the following language that's involved there with regard to just amending that paragraph.
Also move on to unfinished business number one.
Second, any further discussion?
Just, just as a quick comment on this, I mean, our $50,000 contribution there, they got this expected of a million-dollar project, so, you know, we're making a small contribution to the rest of the thing, so...
Yeah, because I, my understanding, there's quite a bit of right-of-way acquisition, and they even had to purchase a couple homes to take that curb out of that road and realign that bridge. Okay, well, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Okay, that'll conclude unfinished business. We'll go to new business, and the first item is false alarms.
Also move on to new business number one.
Second, any discussion?
You know what? We're back up again here on the Time Warner. Also, it's fifth and, fifth and sixth, I believe that was my going trend last year. I mean, we always talk about, is there anything more? Literally, is there anything we can do?
There is. You can raise it. Under the home rule, I believe, you can go up to a thousand.
I mean, it just gets crazy, because it's taking our resources to respond to something that's sort of a record presence issue.
In fact, a few times ago, I think we had started that discussion. I'm not sure we ended it, but I know we started it, and we talked about, I think we, is it everyone after the sixth is 250? Or something like that? Well, it'd be an easy change to make, you know, six to eight, 500, and after eight, a thousand bucks. I mean, you can do it any way you want to do it.
I just personally believe it's ridiculous. I mean, we're seeing some of the same businesses on here. Obviously, there's no incentive whatsoever to fix or alleviate the issue. It's simply reroute our safety forces to somewhere else.
You can even go seven to 10 is 500, and after 10, it's a thousand. I mean, once you've gotten to 10 false alarms, where we've had our guys in uniform respond to, take time away from what they're got to do, they got to turn the lights on, they got to go, it puts, you know, them in danger. It sucks up resources.
Well, now, like, you're taking a cruiser from outside of that quadrant.
That's right.
They have to tell you to go assist a galloped.
So, you can certainly raise it if you want to.
I mean, I, I agree with both of you, but, but we should find, find out why they're doing it first. It could be, something, it could be something simple, and why it's happening, and we find out, oh, we didn't know that, sorry. I mean, you guys want to raise that without finding out what happened first.
Okay, well, we've admitted on some occasions before where we have followed, saying, hey, it's false alarm, that, false alarm. This is, we've sent, we've sent letters to some of these folks, and we still see this.
Because I've had, I've had mine go off like two times within the last month, and it has to do because of Time Warner and these phones, and whatever's going on in our lot, and what causes ours to trip off, so, I mean, so I would be penalized for that. It's not my fault that, that the company made my, I'm just saying, let's be careful. I'm okay with it, but let's be careful.
No, I mean, it's a situation like yours out there, it was a residential area that was being affected because of phone lines. I think we have the ability to waive that. I mean, we don't have to find it, if they can show cause, the reason why it's happening like this. I would be in favor of looking at increasing costs for these commercial entities, more so than the residential ones.
We don't get many residential's that go up as high as...
Yeah, these are commercial entities, and, you know, you can't say after you get to the fifth, sixth, seventh time that you're getting a bill in the mail about a false alarm, that this hasn't been brought to somebody's attention within the company. And it's, hey, I got a problem.
I agree, I would just like to know why they're going wrong, because, you know, it's something that they, like Scott said, it's something that they should have fixed, and just neglecting that, I'm 100% okay with it, but if it's something else, then I'm not okay with it, so, that's wrong, that's all.
See, and the other thing on here too, I have a question, Eric, there's two fif, no, that's 5520 and 5,021.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we should do two things. We should look at, look at commercial, we're increasing that after residential. You know, making that limit, once it gets to the 50, instead of the third, maybe jumping it. Because that gives them 300 under the wall rate, so if we get to the fifth one, maybe, but, and also make contact of similar as well, all these entities again, to ask them to please respond to what's going on. But I agree with both, I think we should look at increasing those fees, especially in that area of the township, when we're probably bringing somebody out of the opposite end of the township to back the officer up as we plan. That's leaving that side of the township uncontrolled. Okay, no further questions or roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Number two is with regard to the newsletter, to the summer newsletter. The first resolution, number two, is to pay the printing company. The second one is for the postage, that's number three.
Also move on to new business number two.
Any discussion?
Real quick, did you guys, if I have, did we get an email from Linda? We were supposed to have that by noon, so that we could look at it, but we don't have it. I guess she emailed us and said that this is just, help me out, we just need to...
That's simply, it's for approval of any method process, and so what we consider, we can...
Yeah, because I have, I've looked at it.
...intinge, with the contingency upon final approval by the board, so...
Sure.
Now, is this still being done in-house?
As far as the layout, yeah, that's my, that's my understanding.
Yeah. Mine as well.
It's being done here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's been no, nothing noted, not a being outsourced, so...
What, where's it being done? It's being done by a previous ex-employee. I was told that today. It's being right up front, yeah, it's not being done here.
Okay, of course, we, I guess I don't...
I just want to make sure if this is not being done in-house, and it's being done by an outside employee that used to be employed by us, that there's no additional costs being brought in.
I was told that today, that it's being done by one...
We also, it's outside by...
I should talk to you about that.
Not unless you know about, and they have ex-employees who are good news, or be nice if someone shared it.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, well, I don't want to delay the mailing of the sending, so we'll pass this. If anybody has any changes or things they want to make corrections, they want to make in the newsletter, we have, I think, what is it, two weeks? I'd say within the week, and any changes or corrections you want to release, so most of you may. And I would like to know where the newsletter is being done, and by whom, the layout portion of it. Any further discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Uh, the next one is one on three, and three was for the postal...
Also move on to new business number three.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. Go to the fiscal officer's report, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal officer number one is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in an amount of $663,949.95 attached here to and made part of the minutes.
So moved. I will second those. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to Stark County Ohio to authorize the payment of the following medical claims as provided by benefit services.
I'll move authority to pay.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is the financial report.
Anybody have questions? Number five.
Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the following transfer.
Also move fiscal officer number five.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that'll conclude the fiscal officer's portion.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. We will now move to the fire report. Chief Snyder?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report.
They're, they're coming down.
Well, I have.
I would say next month, we'll see if it's a visit.
And what would you attribute that to?
To contract or private services.
So they've gone down private angles instead of calling us?
And actually, last week, we, we called them twice.
So we called them mutually, I mean, actually, it was mutually, not fire response? Fire call? So we're to get down closer in the realm of a reciprocating agreement?
Probably, of course.
Okay. That's where we want to get. Thank you, you did, but matter of fact, that was, nice work. Okay, let's...
Item number two is a resolution to change order. Fire food court additional work in an amount of $1,093.68, that's for installation of sprinkler head in the elevator shaft.
So move on fire number two.
Second. Donnie, just a question. Is this a different type of sprinkler head than the originally designed, or?
The fire food requires, actually, this was actually drafted back in February, and fire food just now is submitting it.
It's changed?
It hasn't changed, it's just now finished the paperwork, it's submitted in, reprocessed.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number three is to authorize reimbursement to Howard Hirschberger of 308, now, 15 cents from his healthcare membership per decision 2037, in the vertical barbie unit.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number four is to authorize reimbursement to Ronald D. Francisco of $260 for his healthcare membership in provision 37, in the vertical barbie unit.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, if you'll have the record reflected, Joe hasn't issued that since tonight, as far as he's not here either.
Sure. Item number one on the road is just the monthly report. Do you have any questions? I'm sure someone much more qualified for me can answer that at some point now.
You know, the hunting is perfect, better. Any questions? Okay, let's go to the zoning department.
Um, zoning number one, gentlemen, before you tonight, is the monthly report for May. And the course activities, checking on my face, so, they're nice. Okay, we had 152 losing to allegations there.
I don't know how many, 52? How much amount of rain we're going to get, it's going to be prepared for 152.
We're, we're ahead of the curve for 2000, really, the last two.
Well, the one thing that I ask in regards to that, I sent out an email to everybody, to all the department heads and all of my other employees, because then you can't be everywhere at once. Okay. And our employees, Donnie, the fire guys, the road guys, Joe's not here tonight, they're out driving the township roads, especially the back neighborhoods, you know, on the side streets, more so than even us. And they drive by these properties, and it only takes a couple seconds to write down the address. If they see something with, that's got a grass that's a foot high, that could bring to your attention, that we should probably be doing than waiting for somebody to call and react after we get a complaint. We should take a little bit more proactive response, and the employees report these things back to us before we get those complaints. And I hope everybody got that email, and they pass that on to their employees, so... All right, let's go to number...
Zoning number two, we have 13 abatements for you this evening.
We're going to move on zoning 2A through M.
I'll second those. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes, that's the 2M, right?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, zoning number three, we have resolutions for seven payments for nuisances.
Also move on zoning 3A through G.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And I would just like to quickly report that we have completed the work on the major abatement at, on Rolling Ridge, and I would like to thank two people, obviously, the contractor did a marvelous job. I'd like to thank Mr. Williams for some input. Detective Hostedler assisted with some property issues, fire, road, and park codes, all helped by pitching in to what we can to help do some pumping, and I think I'd just like to give a thanks to the neighbors for the understanding for the timeframe that was involved, the prime education, so I believe we, once again, we did it properly, and it's completed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. We're going to go to the parts facility first, I am on the agenda as the monthly report. Any questions? I think going forward, in the interim, at least until we decide what we're going to be moving forward, since Derek is taking care of maintaining the fields and the grounds, so we at least have Derek president of our meeting going forward, so in answering the questions that we may have in regards to communication and what exactly is taking place. You know, if he's acting in that role right now, at least in the interim, to decide what we're going to do, I think he should be president of our meeting. Okay, we'll go to number parts facilities, the purchase of an outdoor pedestal fountain. And gentlemen, I'm going to bring this to the floor, you know, discussion. This is, I got the email about this, I think yesterday or day before, this first time it was brought to my attention. And I don't know anything about this.
Let me, let me, let me explain. Derek sat back because I had advised him to work with, work with Lisa to identify what the process is. Essentially, between the La Croix's tournaments and just the regular use of parks over there, at any point, whether it's for the baseball teams or, you know, when the indoor facility is blocked, there's no way for anybody to get watered. And I just know whether, say, personally, running, biking, walking, you're out, you're out there.
Casual use.
Yeah, ca, casual use, you know. Before I even come on board, you guys made some upgrades over there to, Don, you know, concession areas and so forth, you're using. I asked Derek to take a look at the wood and the bonds, for the sake of our discussion, I'm getting them outside water now, over there, just so we can initiate some discussion on this. So, he pulled it together right towards the end of last weekend, literally, when he shot me the email, I said, at least it comes, at least it should get in on Monday, talk, talk to her on this, nothing else. I said, just simply put it on, have it put on the agenda for this, for discussion. But, I mean, with the amount of youth over there in that park, and the last night when I was out later in the evening, like, a lot of people there still playing, playing on soccer fields, and I'm just talking recreational, baseball, people, you know, run, run, track, there's absolutely nowhere.
Where are they talking about placing it?
It looks somewhere over right, right along with the paved park, parking lot, the facility.
So you're talking outside the main entrance, going off the parking lot, or you're talking about the ones coming in off the field on the valley? Like with the soccer ball?
It would be in that, in that facility. Now, what Derek did tell me, he and, he and Jay, I know they can install, install this, but what they also need to fair now as far as details is, would Joe's guys be available, because there's going to be a little bit of concrete work, what's associated with that?
Are you going to put it on the existing pad, or is they talking about no, they're going to do it?
Well, that's where I, I still need some. As far as on that existing pad, are you talking that soccer ball?
Yeah.
I would not see it being on that existing, that existing pad.
Certainly, they have to build their own pad.
It would be a new, it would be a standalone.
Do we have any idea of cost associated with running the water line?
Oh, with the stuff to be in right there, that's what we still need to fair out. I brought this up simply for discussion tonight, because there are some details that still need to...
You didn't, I got a chance to talk to it, because I called him, I don't know, hopefully he says he's going to call me, but I called him the other day, he shared that with me, I'm not sure why he didn't call you, but most of this is going to be done in-house. Most of it.
I was going to say, the only thing I understand to be outside is the curement of the hardware, as far as, you know, the connection, the water.
Finding works for the connected water line.
Water connection. He still feels they can all, they can do that right in, right in-house. Then Joe's, when Joe needs to be engaged from the road, is one of those guys down there, let me say, he'll just concrete, but I'm bringing it up, because I know there's nothing worse than, I'm not running the state even Tuesday and Thursday morning, we're running the great park trails around the high school through Snyder, where you're dying, when it's about 60, 70 degrees out this morning, there's nowhere to grab a drink of water, and you can carry something with you, but...
I don't think it's a bad idea to put a water pump out there, I think...
It would have to be winterized, just like everything else.
Oh, yeah, that you just weren't told about. I mean, I mean, that's, I'm staying in the role even, like what you said, makes sense with the tournaments that just happened, but I think that's why, going forward, I think, because you got questions like this, I would like that at least happen, they're present.
Yeah, and one thing we did say that makes sense, that when the doors are closed, there, there is no access to any water. So like Scott said, you're all there working out on that trail, you've got, there's no water, they don't...
We've got a portage on our area, they can use the restroom, but there's no way to...
I mean, are we going to locate this off the side of the path, at least?
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
So people are walking, they can use it?
Yeah.
Right, because this device has a compartment where you can fill up your water tanks.
Yeah, you got, you got ADA accessible water component.
You can fill up your water tanks.
And this is all...
But I mean, is that going to be located a little closer to the walking path?
Yeah.
So people won't use in the path, they don't have to come off and go to it.
Yeah, they're going to try to find it.
I mean, I, I just, I mean, I think it's a good idea, I mean, it's just... I want to work, and if the board's comfortable, it's, I think it's something that's needed.
I think we tried our best to explain to you, the nights that was explained to you, but we're, we're doing our best, Scott's doing it, I knew about it, and I, since I talked to Derek, we're doing our best to hopefully share with you.
I mean, if nothing else, again, for the sake of discussion, table, table, it's over there.
Does this cost include, before I...
This, this will, this will include the concrete? Because, you know, let's see here.
Look, if you don't feel comfortable, and Scott and I are both patient enough, if you want to look at it, we, we can take it.
No, this is, this is hard, this is hard, this is hard, hard.
It's kind of a hard one, you hurt.
Yeah, so, you know, finding that problem.
We're going to do most of the labor ourselves, and we're going to work, run the plumbing to the water line.
Because literally, when it comes through Friday or whatever, I said, triple back, triple Joe, clarify if, and when, you know, what's the type of lead time on something like this to get it? The goal would obviously be, once we have all those details, to be able to have it for a fall soccer season, if you can.
Well, to run the wa, to run the water line and pour the concrete pad, if we're going to do that in-house...
It's going to be one water, is that?
Yeah, it's one, at the time, or one of our existing water lines, but, I mean, I couldn't see that exceeding, you know, $5,000 total for all of it, you know, even if it, actually, that'd probably be high.
There's going to be some plumbing, there's going to be some plumbing, probably a connection, concrete. So we could be using Jade there for the plumbing, the plumbing, the electric, and then Joe, Joe's going to gather the foundation for the foundation.
Why don't we do this, I mean, I'm comfortable with the purchase of the, the hardware and stuff, but before we go forward, why don't we have them put the numbers together, and let's get a total cost of, the cost one, and the plumbing, the electric, and what it's going to cost us to do in-house, and we'll pass it on over in the resolution that would read not to exceed for the total installation of the, you know, the hardware and the labor. I think, I think it's something that could be used over there in the park, just, we need to get some numbers and say, would, would just pass a resolution, don't you think that would be here, to say not, that they install the water pump out there, that the purchase from X not to exceed an X dollar or not?
Yeah, you can say that.
Yeah, next, we need to get that, or we could, I, I...
You don't know the specs, sorry, you better clarify what they're, what they're going on. You don't know, you got hardware there, and then realize you can't put it in, you can't put it in, no.
No.
So we'll table this on the next meeting. Okay.
Oh, yeah, the cell, we're putting old water pumps back in, back out over at Diamond.
Oh, sure. Derek told me yesterday he was very upset that somehow the new fountains that were on their way that were tracked somehow never made it here and aren't going to make it here right now. They'd have to be reordered.
Those are the stainless.
That's what's brand new. So we've been having no water up there. So what he's going to do is install the old ones back. And then we'll go ahead and decide if we're going to look at someone else to repurchase over there.
Because those were, we might have to say, because of warranties, you'd prefer to be replaced. So that there was no new additional expense.
That's correct.
Coming from the township.
Somehow they didn't get here. They're not here. So now we have to put the old ones back in for now.
Well, we should probably get them installed at the beginning of spring until the new ones came in anyways. I don't know why we let them close.
They were supposed to be on their way. It just didn't, didn't.
They figured they was going to get here early enough where if they had delayed it.
Yeah.
Just a few weeks instead of putting them in, tearing them off, putting new ones in.
Then we'll close our parks and facilities. Let's go to the communication. Go back there.
Sure. We have a communication from Ms. Ellen Baumgartner. Hope I'm saying that close to right.
Okay.
And she's writing to you folks to thank you for your help for her and her neighbors with the storm drain issue. And she did check it out. It seems to be working. She thinks the fix did the trick. And there wasn't even as much standing water on property lines over there, which was an issue. Praises you for your response being faster than a speeding bullet and hopes her, her neighbors are pleased with her. And says that to you guys. And I think that includes all the folks that work over there from the road crew and whatnot are awesome. And here's to you. Thanks for helping out.
Now we're going to go to public speaks if anybody wishes to address the board. You could, if you need to talk, you can address the board now if you have to go. Just use the, just come up, just come up here and give your name and address.
Okay.
She's got even nerves.
Hi, I'm Morgan and I live.
Morgan, what's your last name?
Oh, sure.
Sure. Okay, give the spelling to the entity.
Morgan and S D H U E I C H.
Sure, we've never gotten.
I have a couple of questions. I see that Monticello has like signs for the neighborhood. And like Sherwood Village, Kings Creek, it all, I mean, why our neighborhood doesn't?
Some of those have to do directly with the homeowners associations that are in them to when the developments are initially established. I believe within the city, you can't know, they've had some grant dollars that went to establish and signage throughout the entire city at some of the gateways as well as the parks. That's what I do know. Are you talking about the ones specifically going into the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, those are usually put up by the developer when the allotment was built. And those are usually then maintained by the homeowners associations after they're put in. And it's put on usually on common ground. It's part of the association. If your neighborhood doesn't have one at times, that probably means that back when your neighborhood was developed, the developer at that time, that wasn't the end thing to do when they built your neighborhood. But that's always something your association could do. I know Scott lives over there.
Is Sherwood?
Well, that's Sherwood. I get backwards.
What's Sherwood?
No, I live in Laurel Ridge.
Laurel Ridge.
Oh, yeah, Laurel Ridge.
Oh, Laurel Ridge. I think the only one that there is is right up like.
That's Badler.
Badler and Eastern. And it's pretty decayed.
Yeah.
Decayed, yeah. I think that's absolutely the only one. Because the only signs we have down by here is for the park. Next, I know there's back in our lot, because I live off Laurel Ridge, on the back entrance into the park. There's no active homeowners associations whatsoever.
In fact, there is, isn't there?
No, I, I know there's no.
That'd be a good research for you. A, find out if there's a homeowner association. And then B, you have to be out walking, find out if people are interested. Because I know that when Pembroke was getting remodeled up there, the association there constructed a brand new, put a brand new sign, but that came from them, not from us. It'd be a great project. You never know. If you did a lot of walking and talking to the Laurel Ridge people, they may see that it's a great idea. We'll contribute, hold a little meeting, get people together. It takes some work, but it could happen. It's a good thought.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Was that the only question?
Yes, it is.
Very nice.
Perfect, thank you.
Good help.
Hi, I'm Jim Dyke.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Is it Jim Dyke?
Yeah, D Y D, Quad County React. We handled the parking at Diamond Park for the lacrosse tournament. We spoke with Lou already about this. It's a disaster. I mean, there's got to be a better plan that can be put in place. There's no signage for these people. There's no, you know, indications where they can park once things fill up. You know, they're cussing my people out. It's just, it's, it's very unorganized. In the past, we worked with Todd Alexander. I understand he's not here no more. We were working with Joyce, I think how you pronounce it. We had an agreement in place with Joyce about what would be the donation we would receive once we completed our end. And two days before the tournament, Joyce had invited me to modify the agreement to say we had to have X amount of people to get X amount of dollars. And I discussed with Lou, I don't, I mean, he, I think we were of the same agreement. You don't come two days before and try to change something that's been in place for two months or better. And then we notified her that we didn't have, we had four people on Saturday and we had two people on Sunday. We didn't meet the commitment on Sunday. The original commitment with Mr. Alexander was four people each day. We met the four on Saturday. We didn't meet the two on Sunday. In the past, when we didn't meet our commitment, we agreed to drop by a hundred dollars on the donation. My vice president tried to discuss this with Joyce and there was no discussing. She told him that she would discuss it with the administrator and they would determine whether we were even going to get paid. Okay, I mean, we, we admit that we didn't meet the commitment on Sunday, but we met it on Saturday. It's being said, we only have one person each day. That's not true. Three of the people that were there on Saturday are here today. Two of the people that were there on Sunday are here today. So we're kind of in limbo as to where we move forward. If you guys are going to, if you're going to still do the donation? If we just want to sabotage and not do the parking there?
So let me, let me start. I, I mentioned something there, Williams, prior to the meeting briefly about it. And my suggestion is going forward, because I know there's been agreements in the past. But I think for your protection and also from the township's perspective and protection, I think what I suggested to you the other night, I ran by Eric briefly, you know, bringing up to these, both to decide tonight is that I believe going forward that we should come to a dollar amount per person that comes, you know, we continue to use you. And that's given to you in writing and we have a copy of that also. So if we have a tournament and eight people were supposed to be there and something would happen, like you explained to me, there was an illness and a death in the family, the reason why the other two couldn't come, there were still six people there. We would still pay you based on how many people that did come and show up and assist. Versus trying to say, okay, this happened, that happened, you know, there's a set agreement in place that it can be filed. So that way you know what you're going to be compensated and the township knows what we're going to be responsible will pay for. That would be my recommendation. Now.
I, I just found out about this about an hour ago. And I will tell you, I was a little surprised that we don't have a written agreement. This is what can happen when you don't have a written agreement. You give them the, he's, oh, well, he said this and she said. So my suggestion would definitely be that if we're going to continue the relationship, and I, I think that we'd like to, we need to have it nailed down. What it means if people don't show up and what the dollar figures are. Here's what was expected of us and here's what's expected of you.
And I agree a hundred percent. We talked about that last year. The only thing we've ever done is exchange emails. But I would like to add something.
Absolutely.
So when are you scheduled to, to be involved with us next? From what I understand is October.
Okay.
We requested that whoever we deal with at Plain Township, we'd like to deal with somebody other than Joyce. Because it's just the experience was all bad.
Well, that's my understanding. This, because you called me a week or so ago, or two weeks after the last tournament, previous tournament, and there was an issue about you getting paid also, that I had to have Lisa take care of that time too.
I, I just think the answer's real simple. Let's get an agreement that's ironclad and it works for both of us. You know what the expectations are and we'll take care of it.
That, that's fine with us. I mean, we, we don't, we don't have a problem with that. But you had mentioned a couple of weeks back. We did the first tournament they had and payment had never came. And we called and she said, well, the trustees, she kind of put it back up on the board, is not moving forward with it or however she said it. I don't remember exactly. But she would get it taken care of. And it was like two days before we did the next tournament that she finally, the check was cut and given to us. And originally, when we talked to Todd, we said if you could, ten, fifteen days after, we could get some kind of payment for it. Because what we do is we replenish our water and all our stuff that we use on the different events. And Todd was okay with that. And then we originally started negotiating with Todd at the beginning of the year. And then all of a sudden Joyce called me and we switched over to Joyce. And when I couldn't get anywhere with her, it was kind of like she just was so minded and didn't want to. Here, I went to Lou.
I think at the end of the day, from our day-to-day operations, number, number of things. The verbal agreement that was, was made, given the situation this board's going to live, this board's going to live up to. And noting, say that hundred, hundred dollar adjustment, because I think individually and collectively, that's who, who we are. We'll stand behind our word. Moving forward, there will be a documented written agreement to specify on a per, per head basis. That way it takes the guess, the guesswork out, out of it. And, you know, we can use that as a, find some way to use that as a blanket agreement for moving forward on tournaments. So we don't have to do one of those individually every ti- every time there's a tournament. We just know, okay, so August, we have a tournament. October, we have one. December, we have the Great Thunder Lacrosse Tournament, whatever, whatever it is, that, that'll be set.
Right.
Outside of this board being, you know, a direct point of contact for you. We all pride ourselves on timely response. If for some, if for some reason you can't, cannot get ahold of us, I would at least note our township administrator should, should be the sole point, sole point of contact. Because she'll know the individuals within the fiscal office, Mr. Flex's office, to engage and so forth. So as to circumvent this.
And then contact all three of us, you know. So I mean, what, the name of your group?
Quad County React.
Quad County React, Detection React Response. Do you are?
And I think, I think for, to address the safety concern, the safety concern. For what these moving, moving forward, we realize there's some challenges. Because, you know, we can't allow parking on both sides of the street. So we put, we put a do not parking. We've got folks back in Diamond, Diamond Park or Diamond Estate, the newer development there that, you know, they've got concerns. So I do believe there's some discussions with, with somebody at the schools to see about using the parking lot down here at Middle Branch. I really don't know who our administrators had that conversation with and where it's at. But I know I'm talking with Mr. Davis who posted the lacrosse turn- tournament. He mentioned that was something he and his wife were involved with as well. They're trying to find some sort of plan that not only we can collaborate with the schools just to use that on those weekends, but then have some type of shuttle. So I think the growth, the expansion of these tournaments. We've come a long way from where we was in the fir- in the fir- in the first year. But there's still some work, work to be done. And I can tell you, is one of the three, and I think collectively, you know, that's a gem over there. And we're going to continue to find ways to diversify and leverage that township asset. You know.
A lot of people come to the township and that's it. And that's the big problem.
Let me ask you a question.
Please.
The, the amount that you were paid for the last tournament prior to this one was how much?
One seventy-five.
All right. And this one, what should have been three twenty-five less than hundred?
The original with Todd was three fifty. And then we got, it got lost in the mix. So if you have three twenty-five, that's, you know, we're, we're game for, you know.
The bundle number was two twenty-five. That would be minus the, the hundred dollar deduction for the one person. But you're telling me the agreement was for three fifty?
That was what we had sent back to Todd, the original agreement. I forget, he, I don't remember exactly. I should have printed out the emails. He was going to provide box lunches and stuff. And I told him that wasn't necessary. And then he come back and we agreed it to three fifty. And then when Joyce contacted me two days prior, she said three sixty. And I said, no, we already agreed to three fifty with Todd. So we're not going to up it with what we already had in place.
All right.
The two twenty-five is more than fair. I mean, that's.
That's what it's worth for?
That's what it's worth for, two twenty-five.
But it was reduced to five dollars.
That's one hundred twenty-five, not a hundred.
And that's fine. I mean, we, we, we admit we didn't make the commitment and so.
And I know, I was, I know I was over there earlier on in, in the day. And needless to say, both those parking lots were slammed. I did see, I, I recognized the faces. So outside of that, plus our, plus our own guys, the fact that there was parking out on the intersection of Diamond and Middle Branch, right along the, right along the railroad.
Sheriff's always throw the vehicle because.
Yeah, they collect the one vehicle.
It was right next to railroad tracks.
This is something I definitely, definitely for our next, for any next tournament that happens then.
We got to get signage.
Outside, outside the signage, we got to get something hammered out, hammered out. Whether it's with the schools or whether it's with the, whatever the, whatever the concrete company is down there. It's got a big open field. Have, have some type of standing agreement with them. You know, as long as it doesn't interfere with something.
You're talking about the field down the corner of Mount Pleasant and Middle Branch?
Yeah, approximately. Well, not right at the middle, Mount Pleasant, Middle Branch, just back before that. What's the country?
Ezra.
Ezra. Yeah, they've got an old soccer field that sits right out front. And I know Jim's tried to approach them about it before. And I think if those offices sit empty out front, that may be a difficulty. But I'm sure our friends over at the school, over at the school board would be more than happy to talk to us.
I know in the past, we've done events where Sarda has actually provided shuttle service. If you're parking outside the area, like from the fairgrounds to the hall thing. So I don't know if that's something they would be interested in, but.
I mean, outside of the legal, just the frustration of parking, first and foremost, it's the safety issue that's a concern for, for everybody. So we'll, we'll make sure through our.
In the meantime, what we'll do is the original, because I think if you're looking at eight people divided by three fifty, split four and four, you come up with a dollar figure per person there, you know, get to submit to them. So we have something going forward for that. Now, does Lisa have your phone number?
It's a little.
All right. Email me or message me your phone number and I'll get that to Lisa Campbell. So she can get on the phone with you and you guys can iron out the details with Eric as far as the agreement goes and the dates and how much per person. So that way you have everything in writing. So nothing changes. So that way you know exactly what is to be expected.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. I didn't, I didn't want to come to the board, but I just didn't know what else. I mean, there was a lot of things that occurred and I felt you guys needed to be aware of it.
Well, like I said, you, after this being the second time, it was the second tournament in a row with the same issue. I think it needed to be addressed. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Does anybody else in the audience have anything? Anybody else in the audience have anything to address the board or this time? Ladies and gentlemen?
Ambrose Purdue, uh, ten thirteen Stone Crossing. Uh, I'm here as a president of the homeowners association and I'm just asking. There's been a lot of rumor, uh, phone calls going on about the sale of the golf course and Edgewood and everything else. And I'm just asking for the township's, uh, trustees keeping the integrity of the area. You know, just, just concerns of citizens and and then any dialogues that can be opened, that would be great.
I, I did get a phone call. My, just for the record, I live in Ambrose's neighborhood and I'm part of his association. So, um, I did receive some phone calls from some people over there that were concerned about it. And I did have a meeting along with Marzoni, um, director, with the developer. It's my understanding that now at this point, he did purchase the property. And he does plan on developing it. Now, he gave us some initial ideas of what he was proposing to do. He did not give us any finite details. He just gave us a generality. I know his intentions were to construct homes that are similar to the ones, um, directly adjacent to, to our allotment. And also then towards the rear allotment to make sure that everything flows the same way coming from Lexington and then from Wellington. And then he had some different ideas for some stuff on the north side of the church. So some possible multifamily, uh, senior citizen type use on that side of it. But nothing was given in great detail. He spoke in generalities. He didn't give us any, uh, the site plan or how many units or how, you know, what type of density that was involved.
And a question, where could I find then the, the Stark County Parks Trail proposal? In other words, I know there was some discussion of the trail going through and connecting across Market.
Well, the Bob, 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 Bob.
It's already there. It came through.
It's on the website?
It's already there.
Is that
It's not coming through here, Bob. It's in, it's in the lot, at least across from the high school.
Oh, this is, this, there will be additional, because I read in the Bob approximately one month, one month ago.
Market Avenue goes right next to the trouble in Washington Square. It already connects going across Market Avenue.
Yeah, that's, that's already there.
I think it's coming down Grover McDowell.
Oh.
And it's crossing over.
Okay.
It's currently coming down Felton.
Felton, that's it.
Right. Now, there is, there is a proposal for, when Market Avenue gets widened, there is a proposal for a tunnel to go under Market with that re, with the work.
It comes along the streets south.
And then, and then that, that proposal would actually have going through the, the Edgewood property.
Right. And I guess that's the consideration I'm asking for is that to work with that to best keep that whole area.
Oh, I agree. Matter of fact, Danny lives in the allotment with us.
I didn't want to point that out. He lives up against the golf, golf course as well. And, and it's, it's all sad.
He's the one losing his view.
And, and, and I've gotten, I've received many, many phone calls on that. So it's all, it's just very sad that we've had really now.
Well, I think you know the history of what's taken place over there. And that's a very sad situation over there. Um, It is sad. I mean, it's sad because, I mean, I, I grew up in that golf course with eighteen holes.
Sure.
And I, when I built and bought the property in Wellington, it's the, two weeks later, I found out that it was sold and then they're going to keep knocking. And now think of all the people who bought those lots, who would have thought of golf and stuff. Why they bought those lots and bought those homes and now the golf course is a big goal.
But we originally purchased it when it was still eighteen holes in ninety-nine. And that was the intent. And like you said too, even ninety-nine, I think a few months later, we heard rumor that it was, it was up for sale. And obviously the schools tried that and everything else tried to weed through it. So it's just very, it's very upsetting, disturbing, but, but in the same regard, we welcome nice planned growth that would enhance all of our homes, you know. The three of us, you had lived there and now also.
And that actually overties back into our mini master plan that we've just updated as of last, last year. There are details in that.
Yeah, and I, I think from the conversation, and Danny can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. In the conversation that we had, um, he wanted everything to flow similar to what already existed on all sides. So he did not want to put anything that was different, meaning multifamily or something, along the areas where the, the single-family residential was. I think his plans for that type of thing were going to be up north towards Apple Grove near the existing multifamily use apartment buildings that are over there, the key though on that side.
It does have that buffer of homes though, I think, that between the apartments and the, the old pool.
Actually, no, I think it's almost
There's, there's, there's two, there's two, there's two houses that is the folks who own all the apartments.
Yeah, the Getchys own all of it. So, but I, that's what, that was the initial discussions. He didn't give us anything in writing that's going to, that shows the size of lots.
We have, we haven't had any kind of a formal presentation of plan yet. Uh, I've been in touch with them. They're still working on on, on with the design and looking at numbers and, and what best fits with, with what's going on. But once again, he's always assured us that the integrity of the single families should be protected. I, I believe, you know, he's got a, a reputation in the area that I believe is a problem.
Well, there are nice homes across the street. Washington Square has nice homes, nice lots, side lots. And that would be, that'd be excellent. So that's what we're hoping.
Um, the other thing too is, you know, the other factor is we want to make sure that it stays in the township. We don't want that property that continues with the city across the street, the city extending over across Market Avenue items. So, you know.
I understand.
We need to work closely with this developer.
Okay.
And by the way, for the record, I know he's here on part of the homeowners, homeowners association. But I want to make sure that he does get his recognition as a member of the Plain Local School Board. For the record, that he is present also tonight, even though he's here in a individual capacity. Welcome. Uh, I think we have a meeting with you guys in two weeks, huh?
Two weeks.
Okay. And then also any other questions? Okay, there are those public speaks.
Yeah, just for the rec, just for the record, um, next Thursday, the twentieth, we've got a Stark County Township Association meeting. Perry Township's hosting that. It's gonna, the doors are open at six P M. Dinner starts at six thirty. It's going to be out at the Perry Police Department in their community room at six twenty-two Genoa Avenue. So the speaker's going to be a gentleman by the name of Hilton Baker. He's a retired deputy sheriff from Summit County. And the topic's going to be drug passports. So.
Thank you. Anything else in the way? Okay, we'll go to the approval of the minutes, uh, for the regular meeting of May twenty eighth, two thousand thirteen. And I will also move to our approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And I will also move the special meeting of May thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
I'm here with the state.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Uh, there is a need for an executive session. Be advised by resolved by the Plain Township Board trustee Stark County Ohio to adjourn the executive session at six fifty-eight P M. From this regular meeting of June eleventh, two thousand thirteen. From this regular, uh, it's authorized under honorary vice coach, uh, one two one point two two G for the purposes and consideration of one A, one B, one D, and one F. Second. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.